Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries, the mayor of Tonga Noxie. Order tonight's city council meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Porter, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Fries.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
All present, Mayor. Thank you.
Amelia, will you meet me at the podium for a second? Counsel, I'd like to introduce you to Amelia Peestock, who is... Maybe you go ahead and tell them what grade you're in and why you're here.
Sorry, I had a brain fart. I'm eleven years old. I'm in fifth grade. And my class was actually second place in the canned food drive.
Very good. She's here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Someone stand over here. Second item of business is approval of minutes. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item three is consent agenda, reviewing of the bill payments. Is there any... Are there any questions about the bill payments this month? Is there any discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We don't have open agenda on the... On the open forum. I'm sorry, I'm getting the words mixed up. Open forum. What's it called? We haven't had one in for so long. Open comments?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have that on here, but I know Monica is here to give us a little update on Tonga Days.
Monica Gee, one seven six eight five, two hundred and fourteenth Street, Tonga Noxie, Kansas. So, I'm here not for designated budget by any stretch, but to talk about what... I'll remind you that last year it was agreed to move Tonga Days and Sunflower Stroll together to create one event. So, we have a small committee that's comprised of Dan, the mayor, myself, and Tammy McCutcheon to kind of start this and kind of map it out. So, we've been meeting and we just kind of want to head nod if we're going in the right direction, if there's any comments or wanting to add or take away. So, a little bit of history. It's been on Labor Day weekend for... This would have been the fourth year this year, but we're choosing to move it off because of resources, volunteers. We don't have them when it's a holiday weekend. People are just not available. So, nine eleven was a choice, but that's when Baser's having their car show and their small town Saturday. So, we would be competing and we've asked to maybe join event or join and work together for promoting two small towns next to each other. And there hasn't been any real interest. So, that would be a weekend where we're proposing to do the library run and the guns and hoses softball game, which is kind of fitting on nine eleven. So, what we want to do is the third weekend, which would be kicking off with moving the park on the seventeenth and then doing events on the eighteenth. And we have a whole list of things we could do. Nothing is nailed down because we would need some approval. Of course, food trucks, maybe doing carnival games instead of inflatables. That way, parents can interact with the kids instead of just kicking them off to an inflatable and them going elsewhere. Possibly a flea market and then tie it in with the farmer's food... The farmer's market that is being proposed later this evening. Car cruise, either band or DJs, street dance, that kind of thing. And then possibly, depending on funding, it's been suggested like a music festival the last weekend. So, we would have a little bit of everything going on, but not costing money except for two weekends. So, I just kind of want your feedback and what thoughts you have and are we going in the right direction? So, you can discuss that and have questions. We meet again on Monday, next Monday. So, we kind of like to have an idea of thoughts.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Gee?
It sounds like things are on track and this committee has put some thought into it and the city's involved. And with the natural occurrence of sunflowers during that time of the year, there's already like a natural feature going on in our area that would also bring some people in town and out of town. It makes a lot of sense. I know we've already budgeted for these events in our city budget. So, do we need to make a motion to approve the actual...
Not the actual budget yet because we don't have numbers. We just want to know if you are liking the direction we're going to where we're doing it a little bit... A little bit on multiple weekends, but not... Some of those weekends will have no cost, but still trying to get something in.
What... How do these weekends line up with the Grinter Farms sunflowers?
We've talked to Chris Grinter and Ted Grinter quite a lot. And Labor Day is, of course, a busy weekend for them, but their busiest weekend is nine eleven or the middle of the month. But their... The flowers are already starting to die at the beginning twenties of the month. And if you look at the history on her Facebook page, they always start showing them wilting in twenty twenty-two of the month. So, I think we would be pushing it if we tried to have them. Everything too late if we capitalize on.
So, what are these dates, then? You're looking at the...
So, nine eleven would be the baseball game and possibly the library run. The seventeenth and eighteenth would be the main weekend. And then the twenty-fifth would be, if we can fit it into a budget, a little bit of a music festival that we can grow in the years to come.
And by that time, the sunflowers will be kind of on their final days.
Right. So, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I like it.
Okay.
Thank you for putting thought into this and helping coordinate things.
Yeah, and we'll be opening up the committee once we have a general plan. And it would be nice if we could have a counsel person on there as well for some direction and some insight, maybe representing the counsel. Or if you have any ideas of who volunteers would be useful, we'd love to do that.
Any further questions? Anybody's okay with the direction we're going?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Did anyone else sign up for open agenda?
No other signups, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Moving on to old business, consider approval of the twenty twenty-one facility temporary use lease for the Tonga Noxie Water Park. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this item is under old business because it was in discussion last meeting when Janet Falk, who is the leasee under this agreement, addressed the city council and expressed a plan about the twenty twenty-one season for the Tonga Title Waves Swim Team. So, the lease document included in the agenda packet for tonight is similar in many respects to those approved in prior years. Twenty twenty was not included because the decision was made to close the water park for the season. But the agreement is similar in many ways to the rental agreement that is entered into with anyone renting the facility. The one thing that's sort of unique is it's about a month long and you can see it's the month of June, scheduled over those four-week periods. There are a mix of practice hours and three home meets included in there and an hourly rate to help the city recoup the cost of the lifeguards paid, wages and some payroll benefits costs, payroll taxes cost as well at ten dollars an hour rate. So, that total, I believe, for this year's event totals seven hundred and sixty thousand... Or seven hundred and sixty dollars for fifty-two hours of coverage, some of those including three guards and some including just one. The pool manager, Darren Shoup, has reviewed the agreement and is supportive of moving forward with it. Didn't have any scheduling concerns. And so, we'd asked the city council to consider making a motion to authorize the manager to execute the agreement and notify Janet that she's good to move forward with the plan as presented. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Are there any questions? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one facility temporary use lease for the Tonga Noxie Water Park with the Tonga Title Waves Swim Team.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Under new business, Resolution oh four two one oh two, Mr. Brackovich, you want to take it from here?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Item A is the resolution, as the mayor read, zero four dash two one dash zero two, which would set a hearing to determine if the structure located at six zero two Yoki Street should be condemned and ordered for repair or demo. We've got a few items in the agenda packet tonight related to this. I'll summarize quickly and then turn it over to both Ms. Kristalik and Mr. Harder, our building inspector. There was a structure fire at this address on March third, did a significant amount of fire damage. It's shortly thereafter, Mr. Harder tagged it unfit based on the structural damage caused by the fire. The typical process is there's some delay between the fire and the city either getting a notification from the insurance policy holder or mortgage holder to kind of coordinate how the funds are received to do the repair. And there's city code that covers how much of those fire insurance proceeds gets set aside to ensure that the work gets completed to a satisfactory nature. That typical timeframe has come and gone, and I believe the property owner is here tonight, too. But we received no such notification from the insurance company. We did reach out to one known mortgage holder to advise them of the process tonight. So, per city code, there's a process to authorize the public officer, which in this case is our city building inspector, to begin the process of demo. It involves a series of things, including informal notice, informal hearing, a more formal hearing afterwards. What Ms. Kristalik has done is reviewed that and added some additional notification process items that are set forth in state statute just to ensure that appropriate levels of notice were provided to the interested parties. And so, that's been submitted along with Mr. Harder's report that kind of details the damage that he's seen on the property. So, what we're here for tonight, then, would be the beginning of that process, an informal hearing in which our ask of the city council is to approve this resolution, which then allows the building inspector as the public officer to proceed moving forward. The end stop here, or the end date, would be a public hearing in June to determine if we're gonna... If, as a council, you'll make that finding and determine that the property's condemned and needs to be demoed. So, that sets out between, then essentially between the fire occurring in March and a final public hearing in June, a pretty wide timeframe to let another... A series of actions occur. So, with that, unless you have specific questions for me, I might ask Ms. Kristalik to quickly review her communication. Again, that summarizes the city code as well as state statute. So, okay. Anna?
Yes, George stated that correctly. I did review the city code and I also reviewed the state statutes. And as George noted, the state statutes do have a more formal process that requires additional notice and publication. And that's not referenced in the code. So, I... But it still applies to all cities. And so, if the city is going to take any actions related to self-help in demoing the building, we would need to go through and comply with those more stringent requirements as well. So, the timeline that's set forth in your packet sort of layers both the code and the state statutes. And I... Again, I'd really be available to answer any questions if you have any about this process.
Is Mr. Harder here? Would you care to speak to the body?
Kind of what's already been laid out is, at this point, with the informal blessing from the governing body, at that point, I'll take my report and information, which includes photographs of the property itself, and submit that to Mr. Stein as a formal notice for the proceedings that are going forth. From that point, he will have a minimum of thirty days from the time of the formal notice being sent to him and served upon to comply with the city request of either repair or demolition. Based on the information and the evidence I have on scene, well over fifty percent of the property and structure itself is going to be touched. Without hearing from an insurance company or lender at this point, the city would most likely only seek... Would be demolition of the property itself. There's no structural integrity or anything to keep that structure around at this point.
Okay, Counsel. Do you have any questions?
Is it secure so nobody else could or somebody else would get in there?
At this point, the city has placarded it and we've been in touch with Mr. Stein. He's been informed of the dangers on the property and it's his responsibility to maintain a secure premise at this time since he's still going in and out of the property to remove his own personal property. So, he's been made aware of the situation as far as the danger on the property. And he's informed myself that he is taking every means possible to ensure that the property is secured.
But there's an appropriate timeline for everyone to give their side of the story and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, all we're looking tonight for is the... Is what, George? Look to... Set the hearing? Or set the schedule for the hearing process?
Correct. Essentially, the resolution serves as the first... If you want to refer to it as a series of boxes to check, it's checking that box. And again, it allows the building inspector to move forward into the second step of the process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Are there any questions from counsel?
I think, George, you mentioned maybe the property owner was here?
Yes.
With a hand in the back? Are you interested in...
If you are.
I'd welcome you, sir, to the podium.
Good afternoon. My process right now, some of the unanswered questions I believe you have with the city, Caleb's been filling me in. One of the things I wasn't aware of, the process of the city getting involved as far as a financial deal to assure that the place would be brought down in a financial insurance that the city would be held. I'll get a copy of that. Right now, I've... Like I said, I am moving my process, moving all the personal stuff. As soon as I get done, I've got a private institution that's going to come out and check the place over for structural integrity to see if there still is a possibility building back. Based on that, is, you know, whether I can financially save some of the home and rebuild back or if it is a total. It's an old structure. And like I said, the city inspection, there's a lot of it. It's going to have to come down. But there's... The existing structure is a brick form. There's like an existing three-room deal, which we could still possibly use as a structural to build off of. We haven't answered that question yet. So, I mean, my thing is a timeline, you know? I'll do whatever I can to appease the city. I know the main thing is the safety issue is the main thing. We don't want to get hurt, myself included. But I don't want to lose all my options or tear the place down and then have an ability to save part of the structure. It saves on part of the cost of building back. Some of the... I think the codes have changed, so where I can and can't build, I mean, that's another issue. If I save part of the home, I can still maintain off the grandfather clock of what the structural codes are, where the new ones are different as far as location of the placing of a new home. But like I said, I've talked to my lending deal. It's just a matter... I mean, the place is mine. I just... It's... I'm going to have a contractor at my expense take it down if it needs to be. They're all licensed. It's my... I've dealt with it in my line of work, so I'll take care of that and I'll pass all that on to the city if they'd like. But I just don't want to... I want to weigh all my, you know, probabilities of what I can and can't do and not get to a haste of taking it down real quick because, you know, an assumption that we can't do what we can do. But like I said, I'll work with you guys as much as you want. I'll answer any questions. It's an open forum with me. I ain't got nothing to hide. It's just... It's a bad thing to happen to me personally, but I'll take care of it and make sure the city, you know, it's not going to be a liability. And like I said, if it's got to come down, I'll come to the thing and say what, how, however you want, which I know it has to come totally hauled off and down to, you know, ground level. And I'll take care of that if it needs to be at my expense. None of the city, you know, or anything like that. I have contractors dealing in that line of work. I have contractors, friends of mine that help me out. Will do it for nothing and they'll have insurance and everything like that and help me out. But it will be done right and it won't be, you know, done in improper way, in unsafe way.
Mr. Stein, I'm sorry. House fires are no fun. I've had one myself. It's a terribly stressful time. Do you have insurance on your home?
Well, I have some insurance and some of that. Like I said, I've, you know, some of this information is... I feel it's personal, so I'm keeping it that way.
Oh, okay.
Like I say...
That was my... That was my only question.
Yeah. I mean, there's a financial... Through the financial company and myself, there's two different policies and there's all kinds of ways it's handled. And it... Yeah, there's... The funds are taken care of to take care of the home. So, that's what I'm saying. There's not going to be any... Where the city has to come in there and at their expense to come in there and cover my butt because there's no finances to take care of the demo if it has to be done.
First off, Mr. Stein, I'm really sorry for your loss.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the...
You and I spoke just about a year ago, if I remember correctly.
Well, I got your message after the night of it happening. I do appreciate that personally.
I'm sorry that that happened. With this hearing process, it's going to be a fairly rigid process with rigid dates that we have to meet. And we're going to stick to that and we're going to do what we can to look for every avenue to try to help you. But at the end of the day, what legal counsel tells us we can do is that's what would be the option before the governing body.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, there's a couple lying issues of what happened the night of the fire that has to be addressed, which will eventually end up here. So, my... I guess my roundabout way is don't get too much of a hurry because, you know, those are going to have to be answered, too. So, once those go in and about, everything's going to be brought to pretty much to a process of a stop until that's investigated. So, I said, but the safety, getting my stuff off, doing anything I can to appease the city, to keep the criminal out of there, you know, and all that stuff. I'll... I'm there every day, even if I got to just sit there to make sure that nobody comes around and get hurt. I've done that. You can ask the neighbor. So, I'm here to help out as much as I can. So, but, you know, I want... I don't want something to happen and then another answer of something down the line didn't get answered because we got hasty and got into a hurry. You say, you know, we got a tight line. I understand that, too. But just as an example, if somebody came and burned my house down, if there was an arson situation here, which is not, but I'm just a scenario, we wouldn't be talking about a tight line of terror to doubt because investigation, you know, it'd be six months to who knows what doing investigation. So, but there wasn't, but just as an example. Soon as I... Like I said, I have the personal... Soon as I get my questions answered and everything like, too, I will be open forum to you guys. And as soon as it's answered, I can't build back, I can't do this or do that or whatever, I'll have a piece of equipment in there and we'll level it. And I, you know, do it according to the code and... But, you know, tomorrow I'm going to get a copy from Caleb on this new regulations that I wasn't aware of and stuff like that. So, I'm not ignorant to the fact of how the city works, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more questions?
No.
From the governing body? Is there any discussion? At this time, I'd accept a motion.
I'd make a motion. We authorize Resolution zero four twenty-one zero, setting a hearing to determine if the structure located at six zero two Yoki Street, Tonga Noxie, Kansas, should be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Hempel, thank you. Mr. Porter, we call a roll vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All ayes, Mayor. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, consider request for utilization of city property at the Tonga Noxie Library and a special event permit application for a farmer's market event. Mr. Brackovich, I believe this is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We received an application regarding the newly developed Tonga Noxie Farmer's Market. And the special event permit application was submitted last week. One of... There's a couple of items related to the application itself. The group is asking for exemption from fees, although they're acknowledging they're not a formed not-for-profit association. And they're also asking to hold the event on city property, which would be in the public library parking lot. I believe if you... In your packet, you should have a map that shows the... I would say it's the east side of the property along Shawnee Street. And there's a request for barricades to be placed by the Public Works Department for the two openings on Shawnee Street during the proposed hours of operation of the market itself. And I believe it is proposed to occur on Thursday evenings, beginning next month and running through the fall at some point. Sorry, I'm not finding... Thank you. And so, I know the applicant, Ann Brockoff, is here representing the applicant. I'm not sure if anyone else is here from the group. Oh, sorry. Didn't see you. So, if you would like to address the city council and give them some more details about what's being proposed and maybe why the library parking lot is a preferred location to host the event and maybe any other... And maybe any other questions that the council might have for you. Feel free to come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Chad Gilliland, two-three-three-three-eight Kissinger Road, Love North, Kansas, six-six-zero-four-eight. And I, as well as several other members of the community, have been tasked to look at starting up a local community farmers market. In a means to help support and really build the sense of community and tie it into downtown. And that is one of the reasons why we focused on the library parking lot because it is an area close enough that we can tie into downtown. High visibility, plenty of hardscape surface area, that hard surface area that can be utilized without, you know, tearing up any green space areas with foot traffic on a weekly basis. We're proposing, as was mentioned, a Thursday evening market to start at five PM and extend through eight PM. And that would be starting, let's see, I believe it was May thirteenth. And extending then through October, and I believe it's the third Thursday in October, so. We, as myself, and we have a, a, I think a four or five board member group that is working diligently to put this together, to support the community and, you know, help, uh, help to offer opportunities for members of the community to have access to fruits, fresh fruits and vegetables and, you know, baked goods and other farm-based products as well. The farmers market has the opportunity to work with the state to have several programs that would also help members within our community. There's a seniors program that offers monies to seniors that then they can use that to shop at the market and helps to maybe extend their budget when it comes to food items as well. There's a WIC program and low-income family program that we would work into the farmers market, which would also be of value to members in our community.
Thank you, Chad. Are there any questions from Mr. Gilliland?
To Anne and Chad, sorry, this application was wonderful. It was so complete. Any question that I would have had for this form, you answered proactively and the logo is even great. It's so far overdue for the town to have a coordinated effort for a farmers market. And I'm happy it's downtown and it'll bring attention to the library. I just, I thought everything about it was great.
Thank you.
Before we go too much further, just a full disclosure to the body that my wife, daughter, and I all are donating time to help out with this project and make it happen, so just so that y'all know that. Ms. Brockoff, did you have anything to add?
Anne Brockoff, I'm at two-one-o-six-o Loring Road in Lynwood, Kansas. The only thing I wanted to add is the comment about asking for a waiver of fees. We are currently operating as an unincorporated nonprofit association. We're considering possibilities of the best way to move toward perhaps becoming an incorporated nonprofit. But our intention is fully to be a nonprofit organization as we go forward with this, so I, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brockoff. Does the governing body have any questions?
Thanks for tackling it. It's a lot of work.
Well, we see a lot of benefit that can offer to the community, so that's the main concern is, you know, multiple members within our community have stepped forward to really try to put this together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Do you need a motion at this point, or yeah?
Well, ma- mayor, just a couple more quick things. Since this is in the, in the library parking lot and we do have a lease agreement with the library board, I just wanted to note for the record that we've reached out to library staff and they've acknowledged that they're aware of the project and that the library board is engaged and aware. They do have some questions related to the operational side. If, if, for example, if electrical power was going to be pulled from the library building for this, that's kind of a unknown and, and I'm guessing that they would want to be compensated for that. Additionally, in that lease agreement, just so that we're all aware of how that works, it is a zero lease payment that we receive, I guess if you can call it that, from, from the library for the operations there. But the city is responsible for the maintenance of the parking lot. In particular, it's called out as a specific item in the lease, so, you know, we'll just want to make sure we monitor the condition of that and if there's any damage, we would need to make those repairs. So back to the application itself, I, I would guess there's two items. One, do you, you feel comfortable waiving the fees? And then secondarily, do you accept their proposal? You'll have to sign off on the affidavit from the property owner. And I, unless any, unless Miss Kersdlick or Mr. Porter thinks of something I missed, I would, I would guess those are the two items we would want to get direction on, from you.
Okay. Counsel?
So if I understood that right, we need an authorization to, for the city to enter into the lease. And then we need authorization to waive our fee. Is that correct, Anna? And that's what we're looking for.
I think to approve the special event permit.
Yes.
And then to waive the fee for the special event permit.
Yes, Councilwoman Stevens is correct. So, the affidavit is actually on the special event permit, but the property owner has to sign off on that. And so it is an application submitted to us, but we happen to be the property owner in this case.
I'll make a motion to waive the fees for the special event permit application for the farmers market.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the special event permit application for the farmers market.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
I will second that as well.
Thank you, Mr. John, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you both for all of the work you've done. I had no idea the level of bureaucracy that it took to make a farmers market and you, you two have done an amazing job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Moving on to items C, D, and E. These kind of all go together, so I'll let, I'll let you explain then, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, mayor. Chief Lawson's also here tonight and I think he's planning to give a short overview of the two proposed purchases included in the agenda packet. I'd like to first address though, what's listed as item C, five C in the agenda packet, and that is a 2021 budget amendment to the police equipment fund. Both of the purchases included later in the agenda as items five D and five E do require us to amend the planned expenditures for the police equipment fund. That fund is able to be amended without a public notice or advertisement in advance as it's not a tax levy fund. And so a simple motion, or as you'll see in the agenda packet, suggested motion immediately prior to authorizing the two expenditures would be sufficient to amend that budget. And so it was called out separately as an agenda item, but the motions included in the packet will include a portion of each item being addressed at the expenditure level. One quick note also about that fund, it has a little over forty thousand dollars in cash balance available and there's also ongoing expectations of a portion of court costs being contributed to the fund as well as maybe contributions later this year from entities like the US Marshal Service that use the range, as well as the proceeds from the sale on Purple Wave proposed for the storage trailers that are currently down at the range. So from a financial perspective, the proposed purchases don't seem to threaten the fund balance level and, and thus Chief Lawson is asked to receive approval to move forward with those purchases. Happy to answer any questions though on the financial side if you have those now or later.
You can keep going.
Okay. Chief, do you want to come describe the purchases really quickly? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Mayor. There's two, currently there's two storage trailers right now at the, the police department range. We included a picture of those in the packet. And, and as, as I had said in the, the request to conduct the range improvements, we don't really know where those derive from. We believe they were purchased from an auction, a military auction. And they're kind of, and they're really not up to shape. They, they, you know, they're, they're made not to leak and they're, they were originally made not to be, to, they were originally purchased so to remain stagnant there, but they were originally mobile army trailers that, that we keep equipment in. So they're really not a lot of use to us right now and, you know, they're, they're kind of broke down, so we're looking to sell those on Purple Wave. I honestly don't have any idea what those things might bring. Mr. Haskin and I have kind of debated that back and forth and he seems to think that they are worth some pretty decent money. And as Mr. Porter had, had pointed out, that we would probably be looking to redeposit any kind of proceeds from those trailers back into the equipment fund to subsidize the purchase of the things that we're looking to, to do on the range in addition to the sale of the trailers. The second thing that, that we're looking to do is, is replace the two trailers with a forty-foot Connex box. There's actually a, a company in Kansas City, Kansas called Pro Service Container that we're looking to get that from. It's a waterproof platform that will be placed down there because we're kind of on the border of a floodplain that it would not cause us any grief. It would be waterproof and it would store all of our range equipment materials that we often utilize for training purposes. So we think that it will be a good alternative to something like a shed that would be metal or, or would be wood because it would be a, it would be a waterproof container that we could kind of enter and, in and out of relatively easy. And lastly, Mr. Haskin's crew, Public Works, had actually done some improvement on our berm there to thicken the berm so we don't have bullet penetration that, that goes through that. And they had done that as kind of preventative measure for us. And once we got that done, they spent a lot of time, so kudos to Kent and his crew. They, they really helped us out a great deal on that. But in looking at it, it looks like there's could be some more materials that would benefit the berm to keep it from eroding even further. So we're looking to basically build up, if you look at the photograph of the range there that we included in the packet, to probably build up those railroad ties by about two or three more, two or three higher. And we would basically backfill that miniature wall with some sand that would give us a better backstop for that, for bullets that are penetrating that range, that range berm. Kent and I kind of discussed it in depth and because Public Works is doing the majority of that work, that dirt work, we didn't hire an engineer or, you know, anybody like that to kind of give us any kind of indication of what kind of materials we would use. So that's kind of a rough shot estimate, what we're looking at for that sand and specifically, you know, that's thirteen thirty-five per ton and, and Kent thinks that a good, that a good start to that would be around a hundred and fifty ton of sand to go behind there. But in the event that we needed to go over that, we wanted to kind of have a little bit of a backdrop, so we asked for an additional two. So the total expense there would not to exceed four thousands, four thousand dollars on the range improvements there. And that's for the, the dirt and the fill, not to include the forty-foot Connex box. So I know I went kind of through that, like a speed date there, so please, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Chief Lawson. Counsel, do you have any questions?
So we, we're, we need authorization to amend or change the budget. And that would be included in the next thing that's in the package as well. We'll take care of both of those.
Yes, we, we listed them individually in case anyone wanted to separate for discussion, but you could certainly make one motion to approve it all.
Any more questions?
Well, if we did that, we'd need to hear about the second one.
We, and we can.
Sure, sure, I can go right into that. The second thing is more of an IT request and you all were gracious enough to approve our, our Lighty Grant improvement there for some of the, the in-car mobile internet connection there that, that we got last year from the Lighty Grant. And we also have a couple different software platforms that we want to install, like for the digit ticket and for our RMS system that the current laptops are really kind of inadequate. They're, we're just kind of plugging along. I would, I would estimate anywhere from seven to ten years old on, on those laptops. And so we're looking to kind of improve the hardware inside the, the, the police vehicles that we're driving around so we can access our digit ticket and our records management system and a bunch of other different platforms that will just make it more, it will make it faster and more efficient. So we kind of did a little bit of research and the highway patrol currently goes with a Dell rugged book that, that is installed in, in all of their police cars. It's a really good platform. Yeah, so it's kind of a sole source thing. These things are built for police cars and they're standardly put into patrol vehicles to, to kind of, you know, withstand some of the abuses that, inadvertent abuses that go into, to, to the police cars, like getting bumped around with other equipment and being taken out of the cars and utilized in and out of the vehicle. So with that in mind, we, we got a bid on those and there's actually five laptops that we're, we're looking at to, to improve. We only have four, what we call, you know, the, basically the mounting hardware, you know, to, to go inside the vehicles. One of our vehicles does not require that because it's, it's not compatible, so we asked for the four mounting hardware components, the piece of hardware, and then the other five laptops. And the bid on that is nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars from Dell on sole source. And so we'd like to, we'd like to purchase that and put it inside of the police vehicles. We can kind of get that upgraded as soon as we possibly can. So, again, if there's any questions on that particular item, I'd be more than happy to, happy to answer them.
Does this upgrade all of our equipment in the car, vehicles?
Yeah, there's, there's currently, yes, sir. There's, there's currently five marked police vehicles. We have a few more than that. We have a few unmarked. But this will upgrade all the marked police cars, computer hardware, yes, sir. It will not upgrade, upgrade the entire fleet of police cars, our plane vehicles and, and one of our work vehicle. But as far as like anything you see walking around, or excuse me, driving around with the, the marked Tongonoxi police cars, yes, that will be an upgrade in that. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Any further questions?
So that, the total of all is seventeen thousand five ninety-seven-two?
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion for these individually or all together?
Well, it makes sense to make it for one, so I would make a motion that we authorize the amendment of the police, which I did right, fund, correct?
Equipment fund.
Equipment fund, about seventeen thousand, dang, my phone timed out. Seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, chief. Excellent work.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I might ask if the council could make a motion to approve the purchases as listed in the agenda statements, if that'd be all right? And I can reflect in the, in the minutes, the contents of the agenda statements for detail.
Start with making a motion to approve the disposition of two used range storage trailers using Purple Wave Auction site. And you want to take them one at a time?
I would, I, if you're okay with it, I'd prefer to lump them all together if that's all right.
And also to approve the purchase of a forty-foot used container from Pro Container Service in the amount of three thousand nine twenty-five and allow the police department to purchase sand and filter to reinforce the police range hillside berm and the material cost not to exceed four thousand. And to approve the purchase of four Havus Dell four twelve docking stations and five Dell Latitude fifty-four twenty rugged laptops to be utilized for in-car usage.
Great motion, Chief. Well done.
Second.
And thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Good. Moving on to city manager agenda, take it away, Mr. Brackovich.
Sure. In your agenda packets, we've got some information about the four-year 2022 budget development process. And so I'm going to go over the calendar rather quickly. Included in the packet as well are some discussion points for CMIP development and where to bring your ideas as, as we're getting that together, as well as what made this year's CMIP list as well as the development from last year in terms of what we were projecting for '22 or beyond. So the first item is the, the calendar itself, started when we did the spring retreat. We have the first CMIP plan for May 3rd, calling special session at 5:30. We could do a second CMIP session if needed at the May 17th meeting, again, going with the 5:30 special session. That gets us into June and at the June 7th, city council staff would present the city manager's proposed budget. And again, as a reminder, that assumption is that everything stays at a flat rate from a revenue standpoint. We anticipate getting the county clerk estimated valuation by June 15th, so then we can look at what adjustments can be made from that flat budget to if we were able to achieve some sort of increase, which the county's already indicated will happen. Then keeping with the way we've developed the budget the last few years, we have a series of meetings where department heads come and present their requests directly to the city council, provide a series of, again, work sessions that can begin as early as 5:00 or 5:30, whatever your schedules allow, as well as incorporating public comment and public requests for budget-related items as we move through June and early July. Our goal then would be by July 21st, we are public, moving to publication on the proposed budget and notice of the public hearing. And then we would hope to have that public hearing and adopt the budget on August 2nd, again, staying ahead of the state deadline where we have to deliver that to the county clerk no later than August 25th. So it's, it's a three-month or more process, but I feel confident with a lot of the work that we've done in years past, we'll be able to move forward. Quickly, again, as we talk about developing this next CMIP, just a reminder, as, as ideas, you've thought of things that maybe would benefit the community and always kind of set those aside and so let's bring them up during CMIP so we can develop those properly. Now would be the time to give myself or Dan or both of us a heads up because that would allow us to also do some research on cost and, and have that type of analysis ready so when we do our special sessions, we've got that type of information ready to go. The, the one thing I would ask and maybe caution is, you know, as we get into June and especially July, those are very late in the budget process to introduce new items that would require additional research or analysis and still meet our publication deadlines. And so that's why we, we try to get out in, in front of that as much as we can. With that, again, in your agenda packets, we've got the 21 CMIP list and you'll probably recall it's organized under street maintenance, new street construction, bridges, core community, water utility, sewer utility, and stormwater utility. And then likewise, you've got the CMIP '22 and future as was developed last summer as we were moving towards, towards the 21 budget year. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions, if you have any, if you have any concerns over the proposed calendar. You know, it, sometimes it sounds like a long time and then when we're in the middle of June and July, we're like, oh, I wish there was one more week in one of these months to get this done. So, but again, we're confident that the departments have been managing budgets well. We know what initiatives the departments are going to go pursue and hopefully they align well with what you're envisioning for community goals as well. So that I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. With this, could we, I think I have a handle on it, but before we go spending, can we figure out, can you show us what our debt picture is? Because one of the, one of the uses for the infrastructure tax was to pay off debt. I don't know if there is anything outstanding, but that was part of the reason that it passed. So along with this list of projects, I would like to have a good picture of the debt as well.
Sure, we can add that. It's actually part of your budget books. There's a detailed listing of what we were able to find as far as when the issuance occurred, what it's for. We are actively also discussing with our financial advisors any opportunity for things that are callable and with the, can we take advantage of the good interest rates now? So we may have some of those recommendations as well, but we can add that as a page to this for sure.
That would be great. It is, it's one thing to be in the budget book, which only so many people have, and another thing to be in a public meeting where allegedly everybody has access to. Anything else? Anything else from Mr. Brackovich?
I'd like to know if you could give me a map of the city streets, a rather large one. I'll be glad to go over B and G and pick it up because I'd like to study the sidewalk program, bike repair station, crosswalk, and...
So we do have a citywide street map. It's the street conditions index map that we've developed and adjusted. It's a PDF, but I don't know if it's going to show where there are sidewalks and where there aren't.
I'm going to put some in.
Okay.
I'm going to put like two or three different levels for sidewalks and possibly crosswalks and that type of stuff.
Sure.
I'd like to have a clear one.
Sure. If, if it works, I would suggest maybe coming by city hall and I'll show you what we have and then we can work towards what you want to add to it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hempel, I would be glad to help with that project if you need any assistance.
Well, I've talked to a couple people that use these sidewalks and crosswalks and that type of thing and I'm going to take a couple of them with me and we're going to walk the town.
Sounds fun. Sounds good.
George, with State Avenue being repaired, I think, starting sometime this summer, is that going to affect us, anything that we need to tie into that we need to think about? I don't know what they're doing. I haven't seen the plan. I assume we know, you know, a lot, but is there anything going on? Because they're coming all the way to the stoplight, correct?
Yes, so...
Is there anything we could benefit from while they're doing it to throw onto this list?
Yes, so we've looked at that and discussed it with both KDOT and BG. So the typical process is what they're doing is resurfacing 2440. So they've given us notification and we've coordinated some in advance because of the technology associated with the stoplight intersection. There's just certain things that have to be located. Their typical process, though, is they come and do all the resurfacing first and then we'll come back and repair intersections, sidewalks, the like. And so we're, we don't have that level of detail from KDOT yet. They've got some projected start and finish dates, but we certainly have been trying to engage with them at that level.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brackovich. City attorney agenda.
I don't have any items, Mayor.
Thank you, Anna. Item H, Mayor Pro Tem agenda, Mr. Hempel.
I don't have any items, do not.
Thank you, sir. Item I, city council agenda, anyone have anything? That comes to my agenda, which is consider setting an agenda and scheduling a special meeting conducted jointly with USD 464 Board of Education. I have been in contact with Mr. Boswell, the president of the Board of Education, and we both would like the bodies to get together somehow in some form before budgets talks so that we can see what kind of projects that we might be able to work to solve together and maybe just to improve communications between the two bodies. Every date I've thrown out so far has been, doesn't work. Wednesdays are pretty good for me. Do Wednesdays work for the group here?
Mayor, I'd like to see an agenda before I commit to anything.
Oh, sure, we'll get an agenda, yeah. And if you have anything to add to that, I'd love to have it. Okay, well, I'll try to schedule that on a, on a Wednesday in May quickly. And that's all I have. Anything else, anyone?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.